Motion by Steve and a second by Val to approve the agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Council workshop report, there's no workshop this week, so there's nothing under that item. Public comment, I've got none registered in advance, but if public would like to address the council, they may do so. Hearing none, we'll move on. We've got nothing under old business, under new business. Consideration of latest proposal for communications and holding facility service. Now, since this is the first, you guys are saying this, we're not asking for a vote on this tonight. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look over it at all. Ron emailed it to all the council members earlier today. But basically, this is the document that we've been working on over the past, I don't know how many months, and we've had several closed sessions with the county supervisors at their request. And this last meeting that we had was in open session, so that's why we're able to talk about this at this time now. So what we've worked on, the biggest thing, the biggest hurdles that we've had, I think, are the financial aspect, how we're going to make the transition, and transition the financial aspect over to the county. And what we've worked out there is, for the first couple of years, the county will pay 60% of the communication center fees, with the city paying 40%.
Ten.
And that's up to a $280,000 total budget. So that was one hurdle, and then in year three, communication center is responsible for 100% of the budget. And how they choose to fund it is up to the emergency management board. And we'll be under the emergency management board, as opposed to having an additional communications board, because at the time when the discussions first began, we, the emergency management commission was joined with Sarah Bortle County, that has since dissipated. And Franklin County now has its own emergency management commission. So we thought, rather than be redundant and set up two separate commissions, they're going to be the same people on, they would have been the same people on them anyway. So it'll still be, it'll be under the emergency management board with a technical advisory committee, and those will be the non-elected people, those will be your, like, your fire chiefs, police chiefs, things of that nature, that'll serve on that. Those are your people who work in the field every day and who know about emergency services and dispatching services. Another, another item that has caused a little bit of a hurdle for us is, how do we, how do we transfer the current city employees over and make them county employees? There are several differences between benefit packages and things of that nature that have caused a little bit of concern. It's also, obviously, causes some anxiety for our employees, having to read in black and white that they'll be terminated. They'll be terminated as city employees. Every intention of the city and county is that all of our employees will become employees of the county center. Now, with that intention being there, we've requested, the city has requested that, it's spelled out in this agreement, that our employees receive preferential consideration over any other applicants, since they're, since they're current employees, and we, and we do have that intention of transferring them over. So we want to try to clear up any type of miscommunication there as best we can, and Ron and I met with Chief Shaffer and Willie a little bit earlier today and talked about some of those concerns. So, you know, we're doing the best that we can from the city side to away any of those concerns. And obviously, as you guys look through this, either tonight or in the future, as I said, we're not voting on this tonight, and you have questions or have changes that you would like to see made, bring them up, and we'll take those into consideration as well. So that's what I've got at this time, if you have any questions. Ron, did you want to add anything to that?
No.
Okay.
Covered everything pretty well.
Okay.
Sean, one question.
Yep.
How does the 40%, which is $112,000, translate to what we are paying today for the city of Hampton?
I think it's reversed.
It's less.
It's significantly less. What the, what the city is currently paying is roughly in that 260 to 280 figure. And then the, the county reimburses us 80, I think it's 80,000 of that.
Yes. So I think roughly $175,000 right now is the expense for the city.
Okay. So the county recognizes that once the move is made, then, you know, they'll obviously be responsible for a significant portion of that. And one of the reasons, I think, that they wanted to go this route was to bridge the gap as a way to, they see in the first couple of years that they won't have to raise the county levy rate at this, at this rate, and they think that they've got some opportunities in year three and so on and so forth. The emergency management board will be funding at 100% by that time. They won't, they believe they won't have to increase the county levy at all, so. But it'll be up to the emergency management board in year number three, how those funds are collected, so. Thank you. Anything else?
How many employees, part and full-time, would be moving?
Four, full-time. The, this agreement spells out that there remain four, full-time, for the two years, that it operates under this agreement. And then, part-time, just as needed, so four probably, it just depends. Part-timers tend to come and go, but I think trying to maintain as many part-timers as necessary is available.
Thanks. And that was, that was one item that was mentioned in our meeting earlier that was a particular large concern is, they, they would like to see the opportunity to have more than one dispatcher on hand at one time. You know, the one instance came up where there was, you know, 25 911 calls in an hour, and that's impossible for one dispatcher to handle. And so, you know, we'll take, we'll take another look at that. We'll raise that with the county the next time we meet the county again. In realistic terms, I don't see the county budging off of that $280,000 total budget number. So I guess, I guess how that's, how that's addressed, and what I told Willie, how that, how that would be addressed, would likely have to be in a creative manner by the supervisor, the county center supervisor. But we'll certainly bring it up. It's a valid concern and one that, one that should be addressed as best as possible, so.
They, they did make a significant decrease in the estimated amount of the budget needed to bring that.
Well, the emergency management, the emergency management budget that was passed was 380,000. And the county budget calls for 280,000. So there's some, there's some discrepancy there, there's no doubt. But as far as what the, what the agreement calls for, the agreement calls for a cap at $280,000, and the city's portion is 40% of that, so. Anything else? Anything from the public on that? Diane, Ted, Doug, Jim? All right. And next on the agenda is approval claims that are submitted by staff, and tonight, those are in the amount of $111,500.71. I'd take a motion to approve the claims.
Some of them are approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Steve and a second by, sorry, a motion by Diane and a second by, to approve the claims, in the amount of $111,500.71. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of approval and adoption of Resolution 2013-07. That's the resolution authorizing acquisition of tenants' rights for wastewater treatment system improvements project. I'll offer a reading of the resolution to city manager.
Thank you. Resolution authorizing acquisition of tenants' rights for wastewater treatment system improvements project, where as the city council of the city of Hampton, Iowa, has heretofore authorized use of powers of eminent domain, in a project known as the wastewater treatment system improvements project, wherefore the city council of the city of Hampton, Iowa, has heretofore found the project to be in the public interest, has authorized the use of powers of eminent domain, and found there is reasonable expectation that the project will achieve its public purpose, will be completed, and will comply with all applicable standards and obtain all necessary permits, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Hampton, Iowa. The prior resolution regarding the authorization of eminent domain and finding there is reasonable expectation that the project will achieve its public purpose, will be completed, will comply with all applicable standards, and obtain necessary permits, is affirmed. The city of Hampton has made a good faith effort to acquire the necessary property interest by negotiation, and has been able to agree to the following terms for its acquisition through good faith negotiation. Section 3, Rod Pratt, as grantor, in consideration of $9,817.42 and other good and valuable consideration, has agreed to terminate his farm tenancy and transfer all rights that he has or may have, and as a farm tenant, including cropper rights, if any, all rights to continued tenancy, including all rights under Iowa code, chapter 562, all rights to profits, privileges, and use, or the harvesting of growing crops, and all other leasehold interests, or rights, including any lease rights, with regard to the Ronald R. Lilly and Kathy L. Lilly farm, to the city of Hampton, Iowa, regarding the following described land in Franklin County, Iowa. Goes on to describe lengthy legal descriptions of the subject property that's being farmed. Section 4, the city council hereby authorizes and directs the mayor to execute the agreement regarding termination of farm tenancy and transfer of all rights attached hereto. The city council hereby authorizes and directs the city manager to issue payment in the amount of $9,817.42 to the grantors. Then, the attachment is an agreement regarding termination of farm tenancy and transfer of all rights. Be it remembered that for the mutual promises, covenants, and considerations herein contain that Rod Pratt and the city of Hampton, Iowa, have entered into the following agreement, to which, one, the parties agree that all rights, except as expressly reserved herein, that Rod Pratt has or may have as a farm tenant, including cropper rights, if any, all rights to continued tenancy, including all rights under Iowa code, chapter 562, all rights to profits, privileges, uses, the harvesting of growing crops, and all other other leasehold interests, or rights, including any lease rights, with regard to the Ronald R. Lilly and Kathy L. Lilly farm, are terminated as to said Rod Pratt, and transferred to the city of Hampton, Iowa, regarding the following described land in Franklin County. Legal description included. Number two, disagreement was entered into by Rod Pratt, under threat of exercise of eminent domain powered by the city of Hampton, Iowa. Three, upon receipt of the payment provided under paragraph 5 hereof, Rod Pratt shall entirely and absolutely vacate, quit, withdraw from, and abandon the above described real property and transfer all of his rights as tenant to the city of Hampton, Iowa. Four, all rights to any interest in growing crops, unharvested crops, or any part thereof located upon the above described lands, shall upon receipt by Rod Pratt of the payments provided under paragraph 5 hereof, thus absolutely in the city of Hampton, Iowa. Five, in consideration of the mutual promises, covenants, and agreements herein contained that the city of Hampton, Iowa, shall pay Rod Pratt the sum of $9,817.42 on or before April 1st, 2013, and Mr. Pratt has signed this agreement. Upon approval of this resolution, and the mayor signing this agreement, payment will be made to Mr. Pratt. Is there any question?
This payment refers to the property on which we, the acres that we will be building at, correct?
Yes.
Does it refer to any of the service lines that would be underground?
It refers to the 6.04 acres, and then also temporary easement that's adjacent to that 6.4 on the west, and then there's permanent temporary easements for pipe running north to the creek, and then west. So there, it's not only the 6.04, total acreage that Pratt will not be able to farm is 15.77, I believe. So it's a little, it is more than the 6.04.
Because he won't be farming that from a temporary easement either.
Well, after construction is completed, he'll be able to go back and farm everything except the 6.04.
Right.
But for now, during construction, no.
Okay.
This is basically Iowa code, we're doing what Iowa code specifies as far as compensation for tenancy interest, and following the law, and I would recommend its approval. Any more questions?
I think, I had asked you previously, Mr. Pratt didn't express any objection?
No. No, he, you know, we worked back and forth, we had the property appraised, and he did bring up something that the appraiser hadn't thought of, which was an application, a fall application of nitrogen and an additive, and so we are compensating him for that as well, and he's, he's fine with that, appreciating that, so that's also included in this.
Questions, and I call for a motion. I move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Jim and a second by Val to approve and adopt Resolution 2013-07. Is there any further discussion? Prowling?
Aye.
Harms?
Aye.
Autarak?
Aye.
Lukensmeyer?
Aye.
Eckert?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance number 338, this is the third and final reading of an ordinance amending chapter 69 of the Hampton Municipal Building of 2009 by adding additional section there to providing area for limited parking. If anybody would like, Ron can certainly read the ordinance again.
Yeah, I basically summarize this, 10th Avenue northeast, south side of the avenue, from 4th Street to 6th Street northeast, during school days between the hours of 7:30 and 4, 7:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And on 11th Avenue northeast, south side of the avenue, from 4th Street northeast to 6th Street northeast, during school days between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. This is no parking. 10th Avenue northeast, the north side of the avenue, 50 feet east of the 10th Avenue northeast and 4th Street northeast intersections.
And after we had the second reading, Craig, you had mentioned that somebody had gotten in contact with you over, I think, on 10th, and I spoke to that individual later that night, as a matter of fact, and he indicated his concern wasn't necessarily so much of parking restriction, he's actually in favor of that. His, his concern is the weight of vehicles that have been traveling on the road, and the construction makeup of that road, and he doesn't feel they, they mesh real well.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
I think he's got a great outlook.
Yeah, and, and to that end, I spoke with Superintendent Todd Leto about any indication about, you know, bus traffic and things like that, and, you know, he indicated that they have kind of changed their, you know, how they drive, and which, which routes they use. And they got very good reason, very good points for that. I was looking for more history from, you know, if, if there was, if there was original intent when the school was built, that the buses would only use 12th as opposed to 10th, and he was unaware of any, any discussion like that, he wasn't here at the time, so. Sure. But the lines of communication are open, and, and as I indicated to the gentleman on 10th, that it's been my observation that this council certainly doesn't have any, that I've witnessed has any intention of assessing property owners for, for roadwork. I said that can always change, I mean, it could change year by year, it could change with, the change of a councilman or something like that, whichever direction the winds blow. But from what I've witnessed, and that was his concern, you know, because his, you know, his neighbors aren't, aren't the ones causing the wear and tear. It's, you know, the school bus, and, and he did mention some construction traffic as well.
We'd had reports of that during the Highway 65 construction, you know, where people were shortcutting in for other, other roadwork, too. The same individual had brought it to my attention then. Like I said, I think he's got some very valid concerns, I mean, you know, there's a lot of school bus traffic up and down residential street, especially this time of year when the roads are thawing and freezing and potholes are appearing, but I'm glad that he brought it up.
Yeah, and Mr. Leto indicated he's, he's willing to work with the city council in any way he can, so.
Thanks for talking to him.
Yep. No problem. Is there any other questions on this? Okay, take a motion then.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Val and a second by Steve to approve and adopt ordinance number 338. Is there any further discussion?
Have we had any other questions?
No. That's the only, that's all I'm aware of, so. If there's nothing else, I'll call for the vote. Lukensmeyer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Prowling?
Aye.
Eckert?
Aye.
Harms?
Aye.
Autarak?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, and tonight that includes approving the previous amendments drafted from the Thursday, February 28, 2013 regular session meeting, approving the previous amendments drafted from the Monday, March 11, 2013 special session meeting, scheduling the next regular session for Thursday, March 28, 2013, at 6:00 p.m. at city council chambers, approval of the renewal of alcohol licensing for Sandy's Flower House located at 707 4th Street Northeast in Hampton, and approval of renewal of alcohol licensing for Red Moose located at 10 1st Street Northwest of Hampton, Iowa. Entertained, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Dick, Steve.
Second.
Motion by Steve and a second by Dick to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next we have staff reports, Fire Chief Kent Olkens, and it's not with us, Police Chief Bob Shaffer.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, city manager. Don't have a whole lot to report. We did go to jail school last week to get our five hours in, in anticipation if things did go through. They still need to be served right, even if they go over the county anyway, so we did get that done. Also, this week, I guess it was over the weekend when we were getting rain, I think, probably on Friday, the officer discovered that we had a leak in unit 3. It was coming through the roof where the, where the antenna, I think it's for the camera, goes down through, evidently the silicone had deteriorated to the point where it must have left a hole or whatever. When I was down waterloo, I got some goop and got that repaired, but then like yesterday, I went and took the visor, or the overhead console down, and found out that part of that plastic was, you know, kind of full of water, so left that off just basically to try to get the, the headliner didn't feel like it was really wet, because I think it probably ran right to where that visor's, or that overhead console was. So I think, left it off though, so we'd make sure that we get it dried, and then I'm gonna see, run some water on it, make sure that the thing's sealed up before we go and put the console back up there, too, so. But just kind of give you an update on that. I guess there was some question as far as what our policies are as far as writing tickets in the uptown area. As, as you know, we have the uptown areas are by ordinance, parking is prohibited between the hours of, I'm going by memory here, 2:00 a.m. to, it used to be 5:00 a.m. at one time, and I can't remember if we've got it switched to 5:00 a.m. or 6:00 a.m.
Six.
But I think that it, you know, I don't, I don't know of any time when they've gone and actually written a ticket at 5:00 o'clock in the morning. It's usually 3, 4 o'clock in the morning they write a ticket. And then, of course, any time that the snow ordinance is in effect, and the uptown area needs to be cleaned, there's also tickets that are written at that time.
You got a specific question on that?
I do know that, I do know that there was a couple vehicles that were left uptown, and that was on the weekend when we got a big snowstorm on Thursday night, and the guys went and cleaned things on, I want to say Friday morning, I might not have these right. And then they also were going to clean it up again on Saturday, because of course, they cleaned it up, but then they pushed the snow out onto the street, and then they got to come back through and clean it again. I know that there were some employees that were warned at that time, they needed to have their cars off the street, and they were not ticketed. And then the next night, it was in that area, 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. again, and they had left it on the street, and they were ticketed, but they were ticketed for the 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., not the snow removal, so they actually got a $10 break on the tickets at that time, so.
I think that's the question.
Chief, I had a person contact me about a trailer that was down, down on the road with a plow that went around it. Did you guys get a chance to look at that?
Yes.
I think it was on 2nd or 3rd Street northeast.
Yes.
Outside the old RDC building?
Yes.
Okay.
That was ticketed two times.
Okay.
And they did come and get it after that.
Okay.
I don't think that we contacted them, I actually had a call from somebody when it happened, as a relative. I loaned a trailer to somebody else, and people that they had loaned it to didn't bother to tell them that they just left it there. So, anybody else?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Chief? Doug Tarter?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, past three weeks have been great, Monday mornings have been exceptional, because we've had snow remove last, last three weeks in a row here, so. Pretty entertaining, but that's where most staff's time's been going, too, is basically with that, and maintaining snow removal equipment. Had a couple minor accidents so far this year. When this happens, I obviously talk to staff, and we just, we have that discussion, and they're aware of things, so. We try to be as careful and cautious as we possibly can. This last snowfall, given the consistency of the snow, you know, normal driving, normal winter driving habits, when people see that plow truck with that beacon light, I just ask people to, you know, stay back a little bit if you can. Like I said, with the consistency of this last snow, it's real easy for one of those big plows to bite down on a three or four inch ice patch, and it, it'll move you, it'll move the dump truck. And obviously, it did this last week, and sounds like a tire and wheel, though, was all the damage on the other vehicle, which was good. So, and I've had communication with that person, but got a lot going on, it's getting to be, you know, we're picking up steam here, with budget being approved here's this, the other night, and look forward to getting staff ready to get going on a lot of projects again this summer, and, and just keep, keep rolling and moving along. Anybody got questions, concerns?
When it comes to alleys this spring, is it going to be pretty much on a, somebody call basis, if that's kind of what we were doing last year?
I think a little bit, I have a new handout, I was going to provide at the next workshop, actually, Diane. It, it actually, what it does, it shows you when we go to do alley maintenance, what the cost is associated with that. We've got some new rock prices this year again, and rocks gone up a little bit. But anyway, it, it, I think you'll find it very informative, maybe I'll just put it in your boxes, and then we could just talk about it at the next workshop, but I can handle it any way council wants. That's why we've been handling like snow removal and some other things. The thing with alley complaints is, though, is we're getting them now, we're already getting them. Downside is, is it really is throwing money away at this point, unfortunately. So, don't get me wrong, if, if this thing is a monster, and we're going to break a tire rot, yeah, we got to do something, but we're probably not going to do the whole alley by any means, you know, but we're just going to try to be reasonable in how we approach it, because the cost is darn significant anymore. But nonetheless, you bet, I know it's still a priority, and I know you guys put that at the top of your priority list last year. That's what we're going to try to do for you.
I, I had a question opposed to me as far as policy in the downtown business area, when the snow is removed from the sidewalks after the windrows are removed, or even before the windrows are removed, and it's just moved to the curb side, and causes more, more accumulation of snow at that point after it's been cleaned? How are we handling that? After our guys have gone, made a windrow, and businesses or contractors come along, just push it off the sidewalk and leave it there instead of incorporating it into the windrow?
Right.
There was a concern about that.
Yeah, I always have for that. Matter of fact, my staff complains about that every single time we go out. But basically, how it's handled is, we go out that second night typically, and do the best we can. And then if it's not done by then, you know, we really shouldn't be going out, I don't think, in my opinion, a third night, I mean, it's expensive. Now, that, don't get me wrong, that's not always the only reason we're out that second night is because of that, but that is typically how the timing of the snows occur, we usually do that snow removal. Basically, how we operate is, it starts, let's just say it starts snowing right now, and we have two inches If we have two inches on the ground before two a.m., we go out at two a.m. It might still continue to be snowing after that, or it might not. Either way, we go out when we get two inches, but at two a.m. And we start, the guys do the residential neighborhoods, and then we have one operator with a grader. He comes uptown, and he goes ahead and he windrows all the downtown, basically commercial district, and then we'll have pickup plows right away, same time at two a.m. Those guys, we'll start with the city parking lots, and we push our snow like from the city hall parking lot into those windrows and try to stack it so we can blow it when we do blow. Once everything's windrowed and all the residential streets are done, staff goes back to the shop, we drop the plows, we'll call in if we need to to get some commercial haulers to help us, and that's when we grab the snow blower unit, and we start blowing. Depending on how much and how heavy we try to be blowing, it's typically around six to seven a.m. is when we start the blowing process, and we go until all the windrows are collected. But you're right, we've had some issues. We have some great contractors in town that'll put it right back in the windrow, they'll pull off that sidewalk, and they put it right back, and we really appreciate that. That really does help us, but we also have some of those guys that don't.
Is it proper for us to ask those guys that aren't doing it to do it?
I think it is. I mean, we have an ordinance that says you're not supposed to do that to place snow, even in, at your residence. There actually is code that says, don't throw your snow from your sidewalk or driveway into the street, and that happens all the time. I mean, it's just one of those things we deal with, but.
Doug, it seems like in the past, we've had the chamber.
I talked to Brooke typically before every season, give them a heads up, yeah.
Chamber members to have their sidewalks cleaned off in order to.
Yeah.
Windrow being removed, but I don't know.
I, I'll try to remember. I think I sent him an email earlier, maybe November every year I tried to send him, but I should send him another reminder because he's a great asset. He can, you know, fire that email out to all those chamber members and Main Street members, so, I mean, he has good contact with them too. I really don't have a problem to try to wave down one of those snow guys, but I've been out, you know, I'm actually out with the guys in a pickup plow. I feel comfortable just knocking on a guy's window and asking, hey, can you get a windrow for me? I've had some communication with some guys like that in years past, and sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. I do try to approach them in a nice way and just, you know, make a nice request, but sometimes they listen, sometimes they don't.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Ron.
I'm just going to remind you, on the next council meeting, the twenty-eighth, that's the day before Good Friday, I don't think anybody's planning on being gone, if that's an issue, if we wanted to change it, I don't see a need, but I just wanted to point that out, so. Unless anybody has any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ron. Council reports, Joe Davies?
Nothing at this time.
Couple things, Mayor.
One of them's happened to be alleys that Diane mentioned is that I happen to have alley access, and ours is pretty bad, but I would just assume nobody went down it with a truck or a grader because then it would only make it worse. And if people just use some common sense on some of those, I think like the garbage trucks, you know, if they see that they're bad, I mean, maybe we need to make other arrangements for those people to get their garbage through a hard surface road if they can, but.
I forgot, I'm sorry, I forgot to bring one thing up here if I might. Zol Brown lives on South Federal where it's gravelled, and, you know, she called me to make a request. I advised her probably be more prudent to put it into writing a request to the council for you to make the decision because it's a road closure request, to actually close the road when it becomes really soft and hard to manage, maybe even could be considered unsafe. But there is a lot of heavy truck traffic that uses it, the buses, I think, use it, and, you know, it's a well-traveled road there, but it would be, I don't know, maybe difficult to close it, but I told her that it's not my decision.
Jeff Spear, he gets a lot of deliveries.
I, yeah, he does, and I know.
But by the ordinance, a delivery truck is able to use the hard surface streets to make a delivery and leave for the most direct route.
Yeah.
So, that isn't their only access that they have.
Right, right, yeah. So, anyway, that is a request from a citizen that may be coming in writing to all of you, so, but she did get that call, and I wanted to pass that along, and almost forgot, so thanks, Craig, for reminding me.
Sure. The other thing I'd like to thank the city staff for, I think, a terrific job they did in this last snow removal. It was a mess, and it was hard to blow from my own driveway and sidewalk, and I seen you guys go by early, early in the morning, and had to make multiple trips just because it wouldn't even scour off the plows. For what you had to work with, I think you did a terrific job. And the last thing I have, Mayor, is I want to thank Travis for bringing us all cookies. Very kind of you.
Where are those cookies?
The mayor has them hidden right over there. I'm right here for safekeeping.
Dick?
Just a couple of things. I did attend the union negotiations, I think it went pretty well, there were a lot of decisions made, I think it went pretty well. And the other three things, we have a few of our university teams, Iowa State just played well and won today, and the University of Iowa plays Northwest at eight o'clock, so supportive moment. Iowa State plays Kansas tomorrow night at six.
What do you think, sports reporter? Steve Arms?
Anything, Mayor?
Thank you. Alan Hargman?
Nothing, Nick, thank you.
Diane Prowling?
I'm just going to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day from those of us that are half Irish.
We're all Irish. I'm Irish. Iowa-ish. My report, I just mentioned I did speak to Rotary yesterday, I didn't get to do that before, because that was interesting, got to see Diane there, so that's always, always good to see Diane there, and I talked to James there and explained to some of the folks there about my faux pas and my first Saturday morning mayor's coffee and how I overslept and forgot that I was going to be doing that. But anyway, I'll have the alarm set this Saturday, so if anybody would like to attend, I'll be here, and I'll have the coffee on, so.
Would you like us just to call you?
No, that's all right, that's all right. Was there a report? That's all right.
What did all the people do that were waiting?
Well, for a long time, I was under the impression that maybe nobody showed up. I called down to dispatch and asked Lily if anybody knocked on their door to see if, see where the mayor was at, and she said nobody had come, but then I found out at Rotary that James and Ted were here waiting, and so, that's all right. The usual suspects they can be, so. Anyway, if there's nothing else, is there any additional public comment at this time? Okay, I'd call for.
I just have one more comment. I would ask that council stick around and mayor stick around after this meeting. I would just want to give an update to the full council regarding union negotiations, and a discussion like that is exempt from Iowa open meetings laws, and so, there's no agenda or there's no action, but we'll discuss that after the meeting, just for a few minutes. Okay, stick around. Thank you.
And call for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Okay, thank you. We are adjourned at six thirty-nine.